Welcome to today's council meeting. First of all, I would like to say, welcome to all our Muslim councillors. We're getting to the end of it now, I do hope that the rest of the day will continue to be comforting. God will answer all of your prayers. Also, for those observing them, I hope that you will keep what you see and do. And I'm hoping that also, the Lord has a good day. Also, the month is a very important month, and happy International Women's Month to all. The wonderful women in this house, whatever people say. They know we're looking after what we're supposed to do, so congratulations to the people who did work. Also, we have only one month of vacation. It's happy Independence Day to the African ethnic community, and to you, from Kwaibumbe. Congratulations to both of you, happy Independence Day. Okay, for birthdays, Saturday, we have Chris Smith. Happy birthday, 2nd of March. 3rd of March, we have councillor Emma Crosses Golden. Happy birthday. 21st of March, councillor Connor Cladbrooke, this is one, congratulations. Thank you, my honourable honourable members. Happy birthday. Councillor Summer, everything as well, happy birthday. Councillor Evelyn Chippin, happy birthday. And today is councillor Peter Powell. Happy birthday. We also want to celebrate in seven decades for councillor Winke. Very soon, 40th of August, here today, happy birthday in advance. Right, so this is our half, 40, and the sovereign, yours as well, I still don't even know. And he has been our head of democratic services since the end of this month. Today, being his master, you all just say, oh. I think that's been over 35 years of service to the council and to the city. Something that is, something that is council in 1989, as a council head. During his career, Andy had responsibility for the chief of tax office, the MIR, and the boundary department before becoming a clinical support advisor. For the last 25 years, he has had responsibility for the council's constitution and community supporting and assimilated additional accountability, including deputy military officer, where Andy was heavily involved in bringing about the changes in the council's status and ethical framework for councillors. Since 2019, Andy has been head of service for all functions within democratic services. In 2019, during his time, he supported the council's decision-making process, through COVID. He's also overseen arrangements for recent prenuptial visits to Robara and the community symbol, for court battalion, parish director, and the weekly life amendment, as well as some events in this chamber, following the death of our late master, Queen Elizabeth VI. Andy is respected by members from across the country. His advice on some tricky issues and his calm and motivational approach has seen the council your fortune executives. Since we've been the centre of the council, three divisions of position, and two chairs of administration. So, council, I have told you all to me, in wishing Andy, as long as happy and healthy, fine, delicious, and able to play, and I will... Please forgive me, it's happened again and again. Next, we have the members, thank you very much. Okay. Minutes of, I don't know, I think number one, these, we need to tell them 26th of February 2025, council meetings. Councillor Keaton. I will not hold for votes to approve the minutes, please. Those four? Those against? Any extensions? That is carried. Agenda item number 7, decoration, the red dress. Members, please. Anything you can add? Thank you. Agenda item number 3, community meetings. Thank you very much, my honourable honourable members. In response to the council's issues at the Boston Bridge, which I am concerned with, and talked about in the evening, pensions, response happens, okay, thanks. Thank you very much. Agenda item number four, deputations. Not yet, council. I'll be with, um, I'll be with my actual council, in response to the council's issues at the Boston Bridge, which I am concerned with, and talked about in the evening, pensions, response happens, okay, thanks. Thank you very much. Thank you. Very kind of thing, I just think, thank you very much. Okay. Minutes of, I don't know, I think number one, these, we need to tell them 26th of February 2025, council meetings. Councillor Keaton. Councillor Keaton. Councillor Keaton. I will not hold for votes to approve the minutes, please. Those four? Those against? Any extensions? That is carried. Agenda item number 7, decoration, the red dress. Members, please. Anything you can add? Thank you. Agenda item number 3, community meetings.
Thank you very much, my honourable members. In response to the council's issues at the Boston Bridge, which I am concerned with, and talked about in the evening, pensions, response happens, okay, thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number four, deputations.
I think that the deputations, yes. Not yet, council.
I'll be with, um, I'll be with my actual council, in response to the council's issues at the Boston Bridge, which I am concerned with, and talked about in the evening, pensions, in response happens, okay, thanks. I will not hold for votes to approve the deputations, please. Those four? Those against? Any extensions? That is carried. Deputation one, which is concerned with the future of the climate.
Good afternoon, and welcome to today's council meeting. Please now make your speeches, council, which should no longer be modified.
My honourable honourable members, good afternoon. My name is Suzanne Harball, and I am accompanied by our chief candidate, Ilana Richards, the leader of Sweden, and Professor Simon Rutenas. We form part of a group known as Leeds Concerned Citizens. Whilst we are supportive of reducing waste and improving the environment to ensure clean air, water, and food, we are troubled that the adoption of a climate emergency by Leeds City Council, which appears to be based on a flawed modeling rather than real-world data, will leave local people poorer, hungrier, and colder. We understand that folks are limited, and therefore it is vital to identify projects that will truly improve the lives of local people and the environment, such as green walls and weather, planting trees, and replacing to the electric heating with gas and water. Since serving 2023, we have raised our concerns about the impact of the climate emergency and associated products, projects many times, including with individual councillors, at community meetings, at the climate emergency advisory committee, and with council officers. Every councillor here today will have received our open letter of date 16th of April 2024, which was recirculated on 15th of May, to ensure all new councillors receive it too. Unfortunately, to date, we have failed to secure satisfactory responses to our concerns or develop meaningful dialogue with any key decision-makers. In spite of almost two years of trying, we have not yet been heard, and hence we are here today to address the whole council. The following is a summary of our concerns and questions. One, there is no explanation of the rationale or data to support the decision to declare a climate emergency. Is it the case that the council is simply rolling out the requirements of the climate change act 2008, as amended in 2019, without due consideration of global impact? In the IPCC AR6 report, chapter 12, page 1856, it is clear that any changes across 30 categories, including river flooding, droughts, and severe rainstorms, are naturally occurring variations. You can find further information linked similar to sent to you all in April and May 2024. This is of course one example of the lack of rationale for the declaration of a climate emergency. So, given the magnitude of positive change resulting from it, and the amount of money being spent, it is imperative that the basis for the decision and any data used to support it is available, transparent, and clearly understandable by most people. Two, that corporate interests more being local and central governments are key drivers behind push-to-net zero and that targeted academic funding, as well as involvement of international bodies such as banks and super-national entities, are using the initiative to further their own long-term financial goals without any consideration of the impact on local people. Three, that net zero policies are working away from important local health and wellbeing initiatives, such as neighborhood networks. Four, that net zero projects are progressing without cost benefit analysis being shared with local people on a transparent basis. Five, that deporting views are being censored simply by the lack of any means of engagement with the council. We would like answers to the questions and request previous to me, including the following. One, that Leeds City Council supplies its own, not under any other body or organization, definition of a climate emergency. Two, that the council's supply a list of policies, not repaid, that are being introduced as a consequence of the climate emergency, together with their postings. Three, disclosure of the evidence, data, correspondence, and other documents you rely upon in your decisions to declare that climate emergency. Four, explanations to why there is no acknowledgement of the existence of alternative use on climate, such as those of the World Congress and 900 scientists and professionals who assign the world climate declaration. Five, why does the council conflate anthropogenic climate change, climate change, climate emergency, environmentalism, and pollution? These are distinct issues which should be understood when developing and making policies. Six, explain how the council's decision cannot be considered predetermined if you are unwilling to listen to and engage with dissent and opinion. Seven, that a brief denominator needs us as a matter of urgency to discuss these concerns. There is so much more you could have said today, but we have time limit. We will send everyone this deputation, as well as the open letter from last year, and we look forward to a more meaningful dialogue with the council going forward. And just one final point, can I ask, or maybe consider, who walked here, who got involved, who... Thank you very much.
Councillor Keaton. I move that the lastly referred to the director of the ENSC housing environment, consideration and consultation with the government.
Councillor Keaton. I will not hold for votes to approve the deputations, those four? Those against? Any extensions? That is carried. Thank you very much. Today, you may do offices from the local department, who will be contacted if they self-report. Thank you so much, and have a lovely afternoon. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, and welcome to today's council meeting. Please now make your speeches, council, which should no longer be modified.
Thank you very much. My honourable honourable members of council, I'm not too old, and I'm a resident and shareholder in the board for Trump today, are John Beach, and one of the local residents and board members of this council, and a business owner. And John Beach, he is our president and business owner, directly impacted by the events presented. Together, we are representing our community overall under the hood. We're facing a serious, necessary issue, HGVs, that's called to the residents and managing local businesses, imposing a sacred, pedestrians and road users. Since the new market, A and B, was being promoted, the extension 30th of June 62, our area has become an unofficial truck stop. Despite any efforts to resolve the issue, the problems are facing us, with both residents, local business owners, facing disruption, intimidation, and acts of violence. HGVs are repeatedly parking in lane lines for extended periods, blocking access, disrupting residents and businesses, and creating major safety and environmental hazards. Pelestrians include the children and those with mobility issues are forced into busy roads due to trucks obstructing the pavement and bus stops. Residents who get to work in high are generally visiting the refrigeration units. More than are unable to access family areas in the northern churchyard. And our verges are listed for human waste, including food, food in banks, or the under the petrol trains. Trucks are often stained, brought to a land house, and some places for two days. Those carrying, they're planted in the two-way parking bay near June 62, quickly unload the business there, lay mine in the cafe. His son Josh operates under an armed license. His attendance is seen in private compliance with various threats, violence, assaults, use of knives, and even his arrest by an HGV, trying to make a false report to the police. And so is coming, he has to hold his training. He is in real danger of losing his business. Josh has spoken to councillors for assistance, and has learned things about Amazon, he is a council fellow. It has been an improvement, with the inclusion of Amazon, and the attendance of council important officers, who are issuing fines. However, due to the limited resources, the council is struggling to provide the coverage, particularly in early warning visits that need to be effective. While Amazon has instituted reporting systems, geofencing, and notifications for drivers, and adviseable drivers of the officials, truck stops in the area, compliance with their forces, or means of. They enforce, they have 1,300 HGV parks accessing their facility each week. Along with the growing number of other operators in the area, and upcoming new villagers, these issues are increasingly troubling. Another key factor is the lack of available truck stops. We have observed the wicked and scalding rates consistently before in drivers for nowhere to go. We're also aware that some drivers avoid these official stops, the only to pocket three around just also resting and position. Needing Waverfield Council to approve large distribution centers in our proximity, without ensuring adequate HGV parking, which is pushing burdens around the universe. We ask the council to take immediate action. To implement truck regulations, to restrict HGV parking on all highway routes. To enforce parking regulations previously, particularly in early warning patrols that are needed. To close the methane and lay mines, talk to our members, approve removal of any infected. And to ensure that future developments include dedicated HGV parking and service areas. We need urgent interventions to protect our residents, support our businesses, and prevent serious accidents. Waverfield Council, perhaps this month, approved further 40,000 square meters of distribution warehouses on 30th and Sike, in essence, Amazon. We ask for immediate control, fully investigating the current potential future impacts, issues that are present, and about as short as a long-term plan to address and manage concerns before the situation evolves. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. I move that the lastly referred to the director of the city development, consideration and consultation with the government. Councillor Keaton.
I will not hold for votes to approve the deputations, those four? Those against? Any extensions? That is carried. Thank you very much.
Today's minutes, offices from the relevant department, who will be contacted if you need vehicles, and have a lovely afternoon.
Next is deputation, please. Will please say protection, in office. Good afternoon, and welcome to today's council meeting. Please now make your speeches, councillor, and council, who no longer be modified.
Councillor Harball?
Yes.
My honourable members of council, I'm Sarah Montgill, with the Labour Party, and I'm for safe, full, with the Ochi Tree Protector's Group. What's an Ochi Tree word, anyway? Leeds City Council bears crucial obligations under the climate anti-90 to preserve and enhance local heritage, as specified by the existing duty under section 14 of National Natural Order and Rural Community Act 2006, on the duty to take a climate emergency, it declared seriously in 2019, by allowing its decision-making processes to prioritize climate resilience and nature-based solutions. To permanently tune from a German to English oak tree to make growth of a crane, to restore the technical footbridge, not leaves, while on my saw, the existing footway attached to an ancient concrete bridge is protected for over a century, since it was mated. Specifically, the oak tree is like no fire. What if it is giving the value it deserves, taking into account of the ambient ecosystem, service of the local citizens provides? Leeds City Council would never sacrifice a human life to build a technical footbridge, yet it took at least one human lifetime for this to create a tiny oxygen give in a helping story for mitigating balanced stabilizing naturally proven asset import. We're soaring off the branch we're sitting on. So what's an Ochi Tree, anyway? Over its lifetime, mature oak is a cost of tons, literally, of CO2 virus for the soil and roots. Its extensive root system stabilizes the riverbank, producing soil erosion from the water run. This helps mitigate flooding. Younger replacement trees don't compare. They have smaller ashower root systems that will struggle to penetrate the compact soil, and it takes decades if they survive, for roots to reach the depth and extent needed for soil stabilization. An oak house saves 2,000 species of insects, birds, mammals, and fungi. Its leaves, bark, and canopy provide food and shelter. Its large canopy sheds the surrounding area, lowering level temperatures, reducing heat stress, and decreasing the urban heat environment. The tree's steep and white red roots, banging finally, solder together, preventing erosion and maintaining the integrity of the plant. It's protected with the ecosystem and reduces the damage in the harmful toxic layer. If there were to be symptoms, the oak released fast amounts of oxygen over its lifetime, contributing to cleaner, healthier air for the economy and beyond. The oak is part of this conservation area and local major, up in the trunk, who's got his recreation, walking, and energy connection, known as to stress and increase the living and enhance community, the area. The mature oak was a living witness to oak's history. It has been there, longer than any member of the community has individually. Indeed, ashes of numerous oaky residents passed were buried in the area surrounding the tree. What if the council put a price on the easy ecosystems services that the mature oak tree provides? It's one of the most nature depleted countries in the world, with the most low street cover in Europe. We cannot afford to continue the normal trade or matter approach. There was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to fully install a medieval footbridge and plans to build a family new walk sidewalk where they arrive. Campaign groups believed there were other options that could have been explored, including temporarily repairing existing walkway, which was a completely option by hand. Section by section, construction of the temporary footbridge ensured more lighter seconds materials, or reducing traffic lanes on many bridges, prioritizing pedestrians, and adjusting lights and sending the oak to ensure smooth traffic flow, which by insurance, won't turn. Or running small and general public shuttle bus transport options, who have pedestrians to cross, with two-way traffic managed throughout work for the option for those who want to and could, to have used the existing white footbridge further down the ring. Even a ferry or temporary floating crossing, which was our 83rd, wanted option, and the road crossing, never been missed, and never worked. Consultation on two evenings between 6:00 and 7:00, and 10:00 weekday lunchtime, briefing Q and A sessions, was inadequate to contend that the convenient solution was the one with the majority support. The majority of working people with children were unable to attend any of the sessions, not providing the details through the Environment Agency or Historic England was dismissed, not providing full details of the nature of the crime needed, and returning several details to Warden Town Councils before trial and error was attempted, was also dismissed. In virtue, public protection of nature and the environment, causing subsequent delays in climbing situations such as this is not going away. To prevent this situation from prevailing not only in our swearing future, we urge the council to give full information to communities at least a year in advance of the process of being finalized, to enable Warden Town Councils and community groups to have their suggested ways properly considered, and to take a longer-term perspective on making decisions that will impact until the next century, rather than focusing on the lowest cost, easiest, short-term, most significant cases.
Thank you.
I move that the lastly referred to the director of the city development, consideration and consultation with the government. Councillor Keaton.
I will not hold for votes to approve the deputations, those four? Those against? Any extensions? That is carried. So thank you very much for the statements, please. Also, for the relevant departments, we need to discuss the musicals and have a long discussion. Deputation for a former local producer, elected manager. Welcome to today's full council meeting. This is my speaker, council, and this is your honourable honourable members of the council.
My honourable honourable members and fellow councillors and leads, many thanks for giving us the opportunity to present this deputation speech today, and I'd like to view concerns being made by many streets and landlords, a number of tenants, and others across the city, who are informed and aware of great difficulties in housing across the city. In presenting this, we would like to also recognize the rising harmless issues in the lead. Many who know me, given my variety of roles and charity work across the city. As long as I have launched charity work, I also set a practical plan, with the aim of providing decent housing for people who need it, whilst also bringing this small room to help me my entire, and hopefully also enable me to be a small legacy, my children, grandchildren. In my youth, and that allows landlords and tenants, the selected licensing process for renting places in Leeds in Hales and Beeton, has been unable to demonstrate the stated benefits. How could charging landlords extra result in improved access to education, training, and services to tenants, for example? And now the evidence against the Lee City Council's productivity in these areas, how can we expect a new scheme being reapplied in Hales and Beeton, and across a wider area to produce different results? The proposal is set out to recreate a two-tier system across the city, with higher demands being placed on private landlords and on Lee City Council, and on the public sector landlords. This is unjust and unfair, and meaning there's not a level playing field, and private landlords have an additional and more elaborate spread being placed upon them. I can take you today to all the Lee City Council tenants who would not be allowed to remain in their properties if it belonged to a private landlord, how is that right? Surely there should be a standard for all. In addition, because of the price of the most deprived areas of the city only, this licensing is being applied unfairly to tenants for a diverse ethnic population, and as the tenant's share of the population arrive at this tick, which results in a policy which has an equality bias. These tenants will see their own choice. There's been no application of equality impact assessment, which is the legal requirement for our policies, and on this basis alone, it feels the policy should review, to avoid a cost of judicial review process. This is, and there is now a judicial review against Lee City Council on selected licensing policy. Finally, the proposed selected licensing charge of one thousand two hundred, and what results in tenants having to pay more in rent, and there's evidence that many landlords are treating to sell, as it's not possible to make any money due to high mortgage rates, increased building repair costs, higher risks with tenants selected, currently owns the landlord around three hundred, and after outgoings of mortgage payments, and before any major repairs or voids. So one thousand two hundred selected licensing fee would wipe out any profits for four months in a twelve-month period, leaving potential year-end profit of two thousand four hundred in the first year of the licensing period. This is assuming no problems with tenants, and no periods of voids with tenants, and the interest rates on mortgages do not grow further, which is unrealistic and extremely high risk. So who would want to be a landlord if you cannot make profits, and you cannot annual take into risk? And therefore, how will you, as a group of councillors, ensure that the housing needs of the lead population have been met, particularly given your lack of housing stock, and your reliance on private landlords? It's getting harder and harder for you, and harder and harder for us. Lee City Council lost two thousand nine hundred and sixty privately rented homes in the last five years, and no consideration for the need to offer a reduced licensing figure, there's no evidence based on one thousand two hundred figure, nor all its dividends of how the eight hundred and twenty-five license fee in the very eastern Hales has been spent over the period. A sensible option to pay by installments, which a number of councillors would support, has not been considered or consulted upon, nor an annual charge like in Scarrow, nor continuing delaying selected licensing to wait for the rent to reform bill, which is currently passing through parliament. Many of the smaller private landlords support our tenants very well, we don't mind them, we offer advice and support to help them overcome difficulties, we send them Christmas cards and we get them more presents, and we continue to try and operate in these areas that are not, that has seen an increase in crime and drug problems wanting for them on. This is not an end to the private landlords, a general side of society, as the smaller people who come less people and insignia become, while the youngest people are interested in this money, but we believe it's more than that. So rather than the history of our brothers to cause social problems in the private areas, or alternatively, as the people able to reverse our social problems.
Sorry, you're trying to do this off now. House of Stevenson. I move that the last be referred to the director of community housing environment, the consideration and consultation with the government. House of Stevenson.
I'm all happy to say.
I will not call for a vote to refer the deputation, those four? Those against? Any extensions? That is carried. Thank you very much, for the today's meeting. Good afternoon, and welcome to your own ten council meetings.
Thank you, my lord mayor, for the last one.
House of Stevenson. I will not call for a vote, please, to allow them, those four? Those against? Any extensions? That is carried. Next person to the floor, next to your own council meetings. Please, House of Stevenson.
I will say.
I will not call for a vote, please, to your own, those four? Those against? Any extensions? That is carried. And I will not move to the last, the second to the last, council man.
Thank you, my lord mayor.